I'd like to call to order the May 22, 2018 afternoon session for the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum. Item 59, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. Proceed with necessary actions to comply with legal requirements to enact proposed monthly rate increases for the Sacramento County Water Agency.
Good afternoon. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. I do have a PowerPoint. Bring that up. Thank you. Today, we're seeking direction to proceed with actions necessary to comply with the legal requirements for a two-year rate increase for the Water Agency Zone 41. What we're proposing is a two-year rate increase, approximately $3.22 per month increase for the first year and a $1.99 per month increase for the second year. These are showing a typical metered residential rate. There's a whole schedule of rates which would increase commensurately. What this is proposing to do is get about a 5.5% revenue increase in each of these two In addition, we are also proposing to add a new commercial landscape irrigation rate to our service schedule. This would be a rate specifically for metered connections that serve only landscape irrigation, whether it be landscaping that's part of a commercial site that's on a separate meter or a site that is solely landscape or turf. It would also include any roadside areas that are only serving landscaped area. The proposed rate for landscape irrigation would be $1.30 per CCF. A CCF is 100 cubic feet. So, an increase of $1.30 per CCF in the first year and a $1.37 increase per CCF in the second year. Currently, irrigation connections are charged a commercial rate, which is lower, but it is the highest rate that we have in our current ordinance, which we can use to charge. Briefly, here's an overview of our service area. The map showing the gold coloring, that's our Zone 41 service area. There's a large area that runs from Rancho Cordova to Elk Grove. That's our primary service area for Zone 41. There are a number of satellite areas, as you can see, Metro Air Park, North Gate, and all the way down to Hood and Walnut Grove. Those are separate areas. They're on different systems, but they are part of the Zone 41 collective service area, and they are charged the same rate. The Zone 40 is also shown. It's a separate service area that's used to fund capital debt on the Vineyard and Freeport projects that the agency incurred. The Zone 40 charge is a separate charge. It's not part of this proposed rate increase. It is not proposed to change. You'll see the red boundary. That reflects the Zone 40 portion, the Zone 40 service area, and as you can see, it overlies the majority of the Zone 41. So, those folks pay both charges. Again, we're only speaking to the area that's, all the areas that are in gold. We're only talking about increase for the Zone 41 rate. From a prior presentation in April 2017, there were a number of questions that were expressed that I'll hopefully be able to answer through this presentation in regards to the Water Agency's Zone 41 water purveyor entity. What makes us different? How's our revenue spent? What factors drive our expenses? How do we calculate rates? Is there another model that's more appropriate? When will rate increases stop? Could we use automation to decrease costs? How do we compare with other purveyors? And what are the ramifications if we don't move ahead with a rate increase? And those are fairly typical questions that we get anytime we're proposing a rate increase. Just off the top, and we've shared this before, what's unique about the Water Agency is that we did incur some debt early on. We built the Freeport and Vineyard facilities. Those are some large surface water facilities that were really looking ahead. Those were visionary facilities. They do serve existing customers, but the bulk of their capacity is actually dedicated for the future. However, that did put a demand or a debt burden on the agency via Zone 40. But it is one aspect that is unique because even though those facilities are not fully operating at their full capacity, there's still a base level of maintenance that goes along with them regardless of how frequently, how often they're being operated. The other unique thing with Zone 41 is the majority of our system is a conjunctive use system, which means that we depend on and utilize surface water and groundwater, depending on which one is prevalent in any given year. So, our system is in fact, it's two systems that are interlaced. So, we have groundwater facilities where we pump and treat groundwater. But if surface water's in abundance, then we utilize our Freeport intake and our Vineyard Surface Water Plant, and we can deliver surface water that way. So, these systems are, they're not completely standalone. They are intertwined, but there are some additional facilities because we are basically utilizing two different sources of water depending on what year it is. So, that, along with that, requires having different types of facilities. We do have high debt per connection. We're about $6,000 per connection in terms of the debt load. That's for the Zone 40 customer base. We have a number of remote service areas, as I showed on the map earlier, which, since they're not adjacent to our main service area, there's an incremental increase in cost to service those areas. The systems are standalone. They don't have as much latitude in terms of operational changes that we can adjust the system to keep capacity and keep pressures up. And just the remote nature of the sites, it takes longer for a crew to get there if there's an issue that they need to address. And then, I just mentioned this, we've got a fluoridated system that was adopted and approved a number of years ago. It was mandated, actually, and that will just continue to be a part of our infrastructure for another 15, 20 years is the requirement because we did utilize grant funds to construct those facilities.
Okay. If you'll pause for a moment.
Sure.
Mr. Natoli.
Yeah, just on that, the last piece on the fluoridated system, we received some capital funding from First Five, and we also, and hopefully somebody tracks this because I don't see it in the data, but at the time that we took that on, we actually built into the rate structure for rate increases in prior years. I don't know how much it anticipated relative to maintenance of that system, but there was a sizable piece of at least one of those years when it raises. So, is that all tracked internally, Michael, as it relates to? Because what was mentioned now, it talks about the difference, but it also, the costs associated with that. But in previous hearings before this board, going back, you know, some eight, 10 years ago in discussions, and obviously more recently with some of the conversations we had, we actually factored in a segment of that overall rate in Zone 41, I trust, that was there for fluoridation and should be, but I don't know how you internally allocate that or not or track that, but my question is, do you?
There's not an incremental portion of the revenue that we account for separately for fluoride. In the prior rate increase that we had, we did identify that the cost associated with fluoride is equivalent to a certain percentage of that rate increase. So, that becomes embedded in our cost. We do track fluoride maintenance costs. So, we have the equipment and the manpower, the coding to track what those costs are. This isn't adding additional costs for the fluoride, but it is something that we do track.
Okay, but the point I'm making is that it's embedded in the cost, but it's also embedded in the rate that was approved at a certain time that doesn't go away.
Right.
And I know there's a blend of funding, but I guess I would just say, I think it's important to track that because that was a called-out component at the time. Obviously, this board is the Water Agency board. You could say that, you know, just blend it all. We raise rates then. It doesn't, I think it does matter because it may come a time when that becomes a part of, a bigger part of discussion is that ages in place, and those systems need to be addressed either for a continuation and a replacement. I just would hate to see it get lost because it was, you know, it was clearly the element, and again, you recall, obviously, and others do as well. But I just think it's important to, not only from the cost side of it, but from the revenue side of it, and again, it's not called out separately on the bill, but it certainly was, you know, memorialized in staff reports and in board action that was taken at the time to ultimately raise those rates after the 2018 process, so.
To answer your question, I think you're right. It's not on the bill, but in our documentation, we do know the amount of revenue that came in.
And continues to come in.
Come in. Correct.
Behind that. And so, again, I just, I think it's important, again, you know, whether it's the current, you know, cast of players here or others, just to know going forward that there wasn't accounting for that, you know, at a previous juncture, and that it continues to be a part of the overall base rates in our calculation.
Correct.
So, thanks. Thank you.
This graphic was, I'll just touch on this. This is an attempt to show the varying satellite service areas that we have along with our primary service area. The color renderings are difficult to see on the screen, but on the left-hand side, what we are indicating is, just as a matter of their distance, the time spent for service connection for maintenance, the further out you have an area that requires maintenance from our main service area in the south part of the county, there's more time and there's more cost associated with that. It's just to give a sense that there's, while everybody is charged the same Zone 41 rate, the further out you go, there's, you know, there's more window time, there's drive time. So, response to that, to the service areas will tend to, can be higher depending on what the nature of the issue is. This graphic is an attempt just to show how expenses and revenues vary with water use, and the key thing is that 64% of our revenue comes from the units of water sold, so that's what's read on the meter. And that's just holistically throughout, through our entire service area. It's going to vary with any particular household or account, but overall, that's about 64% of our revenue is sourced from the variable charge or what's charged on the meter. Our expenses, however, don't vary similarly. Only about 13% of our expenses related to power, water, and chemicals vary directly with how much water is sold. Fixed costs such as capital, projects, those aren't tied to how much water is used. Those are more of an effect of the age and overall performance of the system. And then, there is a significant portion of our cost that is fairly well-fixed in terms of whether we are operating at full capacity, delivering the most water we ever delivered, or we're in a drought. There's a certain level of maintenance and staffing required to operate this system. We have a system in place that has to be there. It has to be functional regardless of how much water is delivered through that system. One of the things I want to touch on here is just to give a sense of what occurred during the past five years during the drought, and actually, we were on the cusp of a rate increase at that time. It was approved, but mandated conservation by the state took us ultimately to 32% mandated reduction in water use for our customers. So, what that resulted in was unrealized revenue of $10 million over four years. And that's real revenue that had we not been pushed into that conservation mandate, we would have seen. So, not only in that first year in 1415 where we had anticipated revenues of about $30 million as compared to $28 million in the prior year, we actually went down to $26 million. So, that was a, not even realizing any additional revenue, that was an additional loss of $2 million from one year to the next. And then, we saw that again between 1415 and 1516. And then, 1617, 1718, what we've seen is the residual impacts of the mandated conservation. Though the mandates have gone away, except for some permanent regulations, but we don't have the mandated 32% conservation. Water use trends, customer use trends have shifted, so we're now sustaining at a 20%, conservation level. So, that resets the baseline usage, and that resets the baseline that we have to factor into our ongoing funding needs moving forward. The last two bars on this graph indicate what we would anticipate with the proposed rate increases as far as revenue for 1819 and for fiscal year 1920. $29.5 million and about $31.5 million. There's a number of factors that are considered in that in terms of what are chemical costs? What will our growth of new accounts being added to the system be? Labor costs, power costs? There's a number of considerations and uncertainties that are built into that, but that's basically what we're projecting for revenues. I touched on this earlier with the bar graph. This is, again, operation maintenance costs, what goes into that, and the rehabilitation projects being a significant part of what we're trying to fund in particular over the next five years, but in part through this rate increase. We do have a five-year outlook on our CIP that was, the CIP was adopted earlier this year by the board. We're looking at an average of $13 to $27 million annually in that CIP for Zone 41. Our typical revenue would be, our capital costs on an annual basis would be about $7 million. So, we're seeing a five-year period where we're going to be ramping up costs in our CIP. We've got a very large Arden project, which is critically needed, and that's the biggest driver of that CIP over the next five years.
Before we leave that, so, on the Freewa pump repairs, that's for the faulty designer as installation, is that our portion because East Bay MUD shares in that?
There's a portion assigned to the Water Agency. All the costs run through the Water Agency, and we get reimbursement from Freewa for their portion, but that would be reflective of our agency, the agency's cost.
I'll just say that's terribly unfortunate how that all worked out.
Yeah, I agree.
And expensive.
This graphic is just trying to show, how do we use automation to be as efficient as possible? We've got 74 water facilities throughout our service areas. We've got over 16,000 automated meter, water meters right now that we can read without having to go and, you know, tap on it with a wand, and we're replacing them every year as we continue to try to get all of them automated. But that reduces a manpower need by having automation integrated into our overall maintenance program. It doesn't replace maintenance. It doesn't cause things to wear out, take longer before they wear out. But this automation, it also extends to our drainage program. I just included our storm drain stations and our drainage pump stations as well. We use automation across both the drainage and water supply side of our department's We can also analyze or assess the performance of our system overall. Simplistically, with an iPad, we have tablet devices where we can monitor how the system's performing and identify where adjustments might need to be made. In the old days, you'd actually have people sitting on site, sitting at a pump or a well, and monitoring how it's working, and then relaying that information by phone or radio to try to find ways to tweak the system. So, we're using automation to help us identify any concerns or issues with the system performance. But again, automation doesn't replace people who actually need to do the maintenance work or it doesn't substitute for capital replacement projects. Comparison to others, we don't like to justify ourselves by comparing our rates to other purveyors, but it's important in the discussion to see where we fall within the region. This is a range of water purveyors in the region. Zone 41, which is the rate that we're talking about today, is the far right, the second bar from the right. It's reflecting about a $33 per month charge, typical metered charge on a monthly basis. And comparing it to a number of other entities in the region, City of Roseville, City of Folsom, City of Sacramento, Saks Suburban, Elk Grove Water, Plaster County Water Agency. So, you can see the spread, and we are just by scale on the low side of that. You will notice the blue bar in the center. That's reflective of the customers who also pay that Zone 41 charge. So, it reflects the 3301 plus another 2880. That 2880 is the Zone 40 capital debt charge. Even with the customers that pay both of those, it's pretty much in the middle of the range of purveyors in the region. Again, we did talk about, we have $6,000 of debt per connection. There's Saks Suburban has got, I think they're looking at $2,000 of debt per connection. PCWA, City of Davis, they're around $4,000 of debt per connection. So, even though we have the highest debt, we're still keeping rates, I think, within quite reasonable range relative to purveyors in the region, just, again, just by comparison.
Before you leave that slide.
Sure.
I find the way this is described here for Sacramento County Water Agency a little deceptive. I suggest in the future that you use the combined rates.
I understand, and we do have both of them there. We've agreed, we found it difficult to convey that, the combined rate when you're talking to, talking about comparing to another entity that does have debt service. It's a better comparable if you're talking about one that has no debt service at all, but I hear what you're saying, and we'll do that. And I think, just to note that the folks in our remote service areas only pay the single Zone 41 service charge.
I'm sorry, you dropped your voice there.
I'm sorry. The customers that are in the remote portions of our service area, the North Gate, the Hood, Walnut Grove, the Arden, they only pay the single Zone 41 charge. They don't pay the Zone 40. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
So, the preponderance of the customers, they still pays the combined charge.
Absolutely.
That's in your Rancho Cordova, Vineyard, Elk Grove, Laguna areas.
Yeah, and that additional charge is a portion of the bond debt on the Freeport and Vineyard facilities.
Do you know what the customer breakdown is? The number of connections in the remote areas, North Gate, Arden, Hood, and Walnut Grove versus the?
You're probably talking 51,000, I mean, the bulk, over 50,000 of our connections are in that main service area.
So, 90% of the connections are in the Zone 40, 41.
Yes.
Portion of that. Okay, thanks.
This is sort of a 10-year window. The proposed rates are shown on the left, 1819 to 1920, what those would look like in comparison to the current rate, which is on the far left. We're not, at this point, we're not proposing any rates. We're not identifying any rates beyond this two-year. There will be a discussion a couple of slides from here. There will be some need for discussion in the near future on funding probably 2122 or 2223, funding a portion of the Arden project. There is a significant portion that is being funded through fund balance and through current rates, but there's going to be another portion of the project that will not be fundable through rate increases. And we mentioned that in the prior discussions before your board, you know, low-interest loan, perhaps a bond issuance to fund that. The discussion will be, depending on how that decision's made, where does that debt service fall? And I'll touch on that a little bit more. This also doesn't reflect this, you know, cost of some other assumptions, labor costs, power fluctuations. As I said, we've made some certain, made assumptions on how much, you know, power rates are going to be, but they're subject to change. So, we're just trying to reflect today, projecting out the rate increase on top of what's current.
If I could mention.
Sure.
Just back to that chart. So, you're proposing the 322 and $1.99, two-year, recognizing you're drawing upon reserves for at least a portion of the, I guess, the entree to the larger project. Did you look at a scenario that might spread that out over a three- or four-year period, recognizing that you're, to what you just said, you'll be returning to this board with a conversation about the bigger piece, the $70 million or whatever it is, the number that we're going to be looking at then? But did you, again, you would obviously have some deference in the first two years, but did you look at a more gradual way? Particularly, you're showing a plateau, recognize you've reserved the conversation that this board's going to have at some juncture in not-too-distant future, so.
So, if, to make sure I understand it.
Well, yeah, you got 322 rather than going 322.
Taking this two-year and spreading over three or four.
Yeah, right.
We're still going to have the funding gap on the back half of the Arden project of $40 million. So, we could stagger these out. It takes us longer to, you know, that would require that we stagger out the portions that we are funding through current fund balance and rates of the Arden project and the other CIPs, but it would not eliminate this discussion of how do we fund the back half of the Arden project. In addition, we do have a 2025 deadline to complete the Arden project because it includes mandatory water meters. So, we're really trying to get that project complete ideally by 2024 and still give us a little bit of room because just for construction delays, we just want to make sure that we can get that project timeline completed by the state mandated deadline of 2025.
But just let me, to follow on to your response, so, Michael, so that, recognize you're drawing on fund balance to fund, you know, some of that to actually cover some of the shortfall that's going to run out, as you showed in your previous chart, in a couple of years. But what you're trying to do with this rate increase is to cover some of the things you talked about in cost, but also, you know, continue to maintain that $7 million, give or take, on your CIP for all the other kind of normal things of maintaining a system. So, just to get back to my question, though, rather than going, you know, 322 and $1.99, and you're, you know, just shy of 525. 99 and you're, you know, just, just shy of 525 over two years, could you not use, you know, say, you know, a little more than a buck and a quarter, say a buck 27 or whatever over a four-year period? It, you know, it gets you there in a slow amount of time, but you're still drawing on fund balance for, whether it's Arden project or, or other projects. It would seem to me that would be a little less hit in the pocketbook. It might make, you know, the challenge is a little, a little steeper, but it still gets you to, you know, look at this chart, recognizing that, we observe that conversation for the big project and wanting to get it done by 2024. It still gets to that same point by 2021 as relates to, you know, the, the overall. And so again, I know that, you know, it's kind of a choice, you can get the revenues early and, you know, but it's more pain in the pocketbook for the customers versus it's still going to be the same at the end of the day if we were to take a different strategy. I just, again, you know, obviously you're bringing your recommendation, but as I've thought about it since the briefing last week, I've kind of, you know, exploring that. Oftentimes gives people a chance to adjust and, you know, at, you know, at $3.22 a, a month on average, that's, you know, that's another, you know, almost, you know, $38, $39 a year just on the water bill alone for, for our customers versus if it was a buck and a quarter or something thereabouts, it would be certainly be a, it had maybe, you know, one, one third or one quarter of that, so.
Well, I mean, I understand that, you know, in, in all cases, the desire would be to delay or minimize rate increases. In what's being proposed, we're really trying to emphasize that even over the next three years, you know, part of what we're doing is that we're trying to bring our, the level of maintenance closer to what was originally anticipated with prior approved rate increases. What came with that was a number of positions that, half of which we've still left vacant since 2015 because of the impact of revenues. If, I mean, if we were to propose spreading rates out, that would have an impact. We would have to look at where would we reduce expenses in the program? What CIPs would we slide out further? What maintenance would we continue to defer? And that's what we're trying to, to stem. We've been in this, in this position where we've been deferring maintenance and sliding projects out to try to manage year to year, but we've got this period of time where we've really got a spike in the CIP needs. We're, we're trying to get us back on track as far as growing our maintenance system. We're not in, in any way going to get to where we thought we would be five years ago with this. This is not going to spike us back to where we thought we'd be. There's a, there's a, you know, if you look at even anomaly, a two, two and a half percent cost increases on an annualized basis, this will make, this, this will start to catch up on some of those. But this, this is really, if, there's, there's, there would have to be some real decisions on what, what are we going to continue to defer? And my understanding or my, my desire is always to ensure that we're providing service at a reasonable cost, but it's also providing a, a service that's reasonable and appropriate and one that, that folks can rely on. So that's, that's part of, that is built into this.
Okay.
Again, I mentioned some of the uncertainties, the, the future is only, we, we can't tell. There's a number of factors that, that could affect where, where costs go. Again, touched on the Arden discussion, it's about a $75 million project, 40 million of which will be funded through revenues that we're going to collect over the next few years, plus fund balance. So we're going to, going to bring fund balance down through the completion of that project and get to where we're, we can sustain post Arden, a seven, you know, seven to eight million dollar CIP on an ongoing basis. That's where we want to be. This is going to be the biggest spike we've seen in our CIP program. But there, again, it's, there's 35 million that, there's no, no means to fund within current rates. We couldn't stack rates up to try to catch up to that. So, I mean, the best way it looks would be some sort of low income or, you know, low, low interest loans, again, you know, bond issuance as a means to fund that, that $35 million portion of the project. And then the discussion is how does that $2 million annual debt service that we estimate would be related to that, how does that get carried? We've got a significant project, serves a, a certain area, we need to make sure we carry that debt appropriately. And I don't want to, I don't want to infer, I don't want to direct where that might go, but I want to bring that conversation back, definitely in the near future, so that we will be ready to make that decision by the time 2022 comes around. Impacts of no rate increase, I mean, we'll, we'll bring down our fund balance, the, the other options that I mentioned before, we curtail projects, we'll defer maintenance, we'll hold off on, on filling some vacancies. It's, it, it would be more of the same. And again, I think, you know, we're at the point, I, I really want to get us providing a level of service that the folks can, you know, should expect without breaking the bank. But it, there is, there is a necessary, the costs do increase over time and we've just got a system that's got some capital needs that we need to fulfill. But, you know, we, we can always make decisions year to year, but those decisions have consequences and, and we've seen that over the past few years. And I'd just like to get, we need to get this program, again, not spiking back up, not goldplating it, but let's, let's get, let's gird ourselves a little bit further so we've got a, a more robust system, something that is serviceable and reliable in the long The new irrigation rate, I mentioned at the beginning, I'll, I'll just slide through it again. Customers that have only turf or large landscaping with their commercial site, they have a separate connection, a separate connection through a meter just for the landscaping. Landscaping itself creates a proportionally higher demand than a commercial, a normal commercial retail site would. In terms of its, its impact on the system capacity and sort of designing for the peak, because when you design a water system, you have to design to what the, what the peak delivery is going to be. And for landscape connection, that's going to be the summer. We're not talking about residential landscaping, this is, again, metered connections that are commercial. Currently, they are charged a commercial rate because that's the highest rate, the most appropriate rate that we have in our ordinance. This additional rate, which I'll actually, I'll shoot ahead, this would allow us to charge incrementally more on the, on the 100% landscape connections and actually would let us charge a little bit less on the remaining traditional commercial connections. The first year, commercial customers would likely see a decrease in their bill because we've shifted a portion of that more appropriately to the landscape, the landscape only customers. In the second year, everybody, all rates would rise, but those commercial customers are actually going to start from a lower place than they normally would have because they're going to, they'll no longer be subsidizing the irrigation connections. And then moving ahead, everyone will continue to rise at, at the same rate. But it'll be, this first year, again, existing commercial, commercial customers would see a, a decrease in their bill, most likely, because the service charge will go down. Conservation, we're, we're continuing the conservation, offer conservation discounts. Historically and currently, we provide two discount tiers depending on usage, zero to seven CCFs or zero to 700 cubic feet of water monthly. If, if they're in that range, they get a, just a flat 20% off the bill. If it's in the second tier, currently you get a 10% discount off the bill. What we're proposing is to turn that to a per-unit discount on the volume, on what's read through the meter, and then a, a fixed rate discount off of the service charge, the service, the fixed service portion of their bill. So there's an example here for a monthly user at 15 CCFs. Under the existing program, they get a discount, a 10% discount of about $3.67. Under the new methodology, that discount would be $2.95. Now, what's driven this is that, well, it's been the success of getting conservation on the minds of folks. In 2012, we had about 35,000 of our customer accounts qualifying for a, a conservation discount. That ramped up to 48,000 over the next four years. And we had a drought, again, we had the mandated conservation, but there's a new baseline. And so what we're trying to do is continue to support conservation discounts for all these folks, but we need to pare it down, knowing that we're probably going to see sustained and possibly some more growth in conservation as additional regulations come down the pipe from the state. So we want to, we want to be able to spread that out. If everybody qualifies for conservation, then we've basically, we, we need to ask for even higher rate to, because we still, again, water save does not translate straight across the board to, you know, cost prevented, going back to that comparison in 84. So again, we're trying to continue supporting as much participation in conservation while keeping it balanced against the rates, the rate increase that we're, that we're asking for. So in this case, typical customer might see, who, who is qualifying, it's about a 70 cent reduction in their, in their discount. But again, the incentive is still there and it's, it's offered and that, that's, that's what we're trying to maintain. Again, recommended action is, is really to kick off the, the, the process in accordance with Prop 218 for proposed two-year rate increase for zone 41. Again, the first year of the rate increase would be $3.22 a month for a typical metered resident. And the second year would be a dollar 99 per month. Also included that this is, would be adopting a new irrigation rate and revising the discount methodology for conservation. Today, we're just asking for direction to proceed with the outreach, proceed with the mailers and then come back as proposed on July 17th for the actual hearing for, for your board to consider approving rates and to bring back any other information, any protest information, any other information that might factor into what rate we might determine that, okay, we can, we can bring the rate down, we'll bring that to you as well.
Members of the board, the July 17th date is just a date, and I apologize, I didn't catch it on time. That's the first meeting after our summer break. So that's just suggested dates. If you want to move it to July 24th, that's fine with us too.
The 17th was, there's a mandated 45-day period between kicking off the, the public process and having the hearing. So if it, if it is, kind of executive has suggested if it was moved to the 24th, that doesn't compromise, it just slides the other, the subsequent dates out.
Yeah, I'd suggest you move it out a week.
Okay.
And then the following, the 24th too.
Sometime in August, we'll work with Michael and get to those dates.
Okay.
And with that, take any other questions you might have.
Too much depression to ask you questions. It just, it's really hard to explain to people, yes, you use less water, but we're going to have to charge you more.
Absolutely is one of the most difficult things to, to try to explain, try to provide some information in terms of what the investment and what we have in place that provides that one.
Have we, are we using as much automation as we can to reduce operating costs?
Yeah, we, we are actually on the cusp of adopting an updated commuterized maintenance management system. We do use one, it's called a CMMs. We have one in place, but we're looking to revise that to have that, really, it takes all of our maintenance information and helps us most efficiently, effectively identify maintenance frequency, service life of our facilities, so that we can target work in advance, so we can minimize failures and actually prevent them. We're doing that, again, our ability to remotely assess the performance of the system, in particular during a drought year, during a high heat period, we can see where the system is struggling and that helps us identify where we can make adjustments rather than sending folks to two remote facilities and give us the readings from that, that site. This prevents that, allows us to assess the system almost live and then we can determine specifically where we might need to send folks to make adjustments to pressures to help ensure that the system continues to deliver when it's stressed.
Can you explain why Farrokh, City of Folsom, and City of Galt pricing is so low comparatively to the rest of the?
Now, part of, and as I mentioned, we have a conjunctive use system. So we have, we have facilities that are groundwater-based and surface water-based. That's unique. I don't believe Galt has anything but groundwater. So imagine you're running two different types of systems at the same time. You, you have two cars, you don't drive them all at the same time, both at the same time, but you still have the, the maintenance and the service and costs and expenses related to two vehicles. So it's akin to that. The conjunctive use is not, again, it's not common. Most, most purveyors are going to be groundwater, especially the smaller ones, are going to be primarily groundwater. They may have some service, access to service water through an adjacent water district. But folks, you know, so those, in those cases, they're looking at just groundwater. It also, if, if they're fairly small and built out, their, their costs are pretty much set. They're just in a routine program of replacement of, of facilities over time. The larger systems and a system like ours that's newer, we have that capital component of new facilities that those other, those other purveyors just don't have.
Mr. President Peters, just some familiarity with City of Folsom, having worked there. Point that Michael made is one of the biggest differences is that their system is, does not have the capital, big projects like we've done. So that's one of the big debt components changed that we have. Also, the source of their water is a little bit different too. As Michael said, there's two different systems we're running. They have waters that they purchased too, so that fluctuates in the prices too.
But during a drought that we had a couple of years ago, weren't we sending water to Folsom? I don't mean to pick on Folsom, but there are a couple of communities, I think Plaster County, that, wasn't there some kind of, no, we weren't?
We, we weren't, we weren't sending any water.
They had, I think the discussion you're recalling is, as Folsom Lake decreased, was there an opportunity for other water purveyors to push water in there? And we never got to that point of pushing water.
Oh, we didn't?
No.
San Juan Water District, their general manager came and she had alluded to that. If it got to that point that they didn't have water, they would need assistance from surrounding water agencies.
Given our ranking in terms of access to surface water, we wouldn't be the, the first source to provide water because there are, San Juan Water District, they've got a greater ability to, to share surface water in, you know, drought conditions or when the lake's going down.
Thank you. Mr. Natale?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Michael, when, depending on what we do today, but I, for one, would like to see us, and maybe as part of the notification if we go forward, is that the ability to spread out a rate increase over a longer period of time, because you proposed basically do this in two years at 521, $5.21 per month. And so I don't know if the notice needs to reflect this, Robin, or not, but if, if we wanted to have that opportunity to at least have that conversation, to make sure the notice would give us the ability to maybe have, you know, over a four-year period, we can certainly decipher ourselves based upon what information you bring back relative to deferred maintenance, to staffing, all the things you've obviously touched on, and you certainly examined that in your recommendation. But I, I would be concerned that if we didn't give ourselves that leeway in the noticing that we came back and then you just say, well, we only noticed for two years, you can do less than, you obviously can't do more than the amount, but you can't extend that over two, over a third or a fourth additional year if you chose to do, do that. So I want to be sure that our notice has the ability to, at least the flexibility for this board to have that conversation, you know, after we go through the 218 process, again, assuming we approve this today. And then the background, you shared some of that in my briefing, but I think that even in the best case here, what you have in your last chart, that if the new rate were implemented in September 1st, you wouldn't see revenues until, you know, until whatever, billing cycle, hiring positions and so forth. So there's, you know, maybe all that float's been factored in, but I, again, I just want to be sure that the notice would give us the flexibility, if that's obviously the will of this board, but to have that conversation in July or when we come back, if we authorize the process going forward today.
I, I think the notice could be crafted. I think the difficulty is that that, we, we will be outreach, but before we can outreach, we're going to have to do the, the calculations and then the analysis. Now, what would a four-year rate increase look like? And how, so we've got, we would have to go back to the, to the rate calculation model that was developed with Corolla and make those adjustments. So that's a, that's a, it's a timeframe that I'm not. So that's, that's a, it's a timeframe that I'm not sure would.
Well, I'm assuming it's $5.21 over four years versus $5.21 over two years. Now, if you're going to factor in some factor because you deferred and you were going to have a bigger increase, that wasn't my suggestion in any way, again, others, was just you take your amount and that you factor that in over a greater period of time. Obviously, you don't have that same revenue gained in those first couple of years, but...
Two things I wanted to, hopefully we can bet thoroughly before we finish this is, one of them is, is if we're talking about two different alternatives, we're entering, we will be entering into a protest process, right? And, and so we're going to be noticing of a proposed set of rate increases. And so I'm trying to get my mind around, what do we say to the people in the context of a protest process? The second thing is, is that the two-year recommendation is based around a certain set of assumptions on what the maintenance would be, what the CIP program's going to be. So essentially going to a four-year rate increase, fundamentally what that's doing is it's delaying work that had been planned to be undertaken. So I wonder if, if instead of us trying to set up a protest process that we may not be able to vote on correctly, one or the other, in terms of this outreach, whether we really ought to bet this issue about the two or four, four-year rate implementation? I kind of hate to do that, but I'm just, I'm thinking if you send a ballot to somebody or a notification and you say to them, do you want this or do you want that?
Well, let me just be clear, again, I get your point, Michael. Again, it's consistent with the recommendation you bring us. My point was, is that you advertise the 521, it may fall short of what would be needed if you did it over four years versus what you do it over a two-year period, but that would be the maximum, or you can pick some other number, I guess, based upon your calculation, but that you certainly advertise that within up to four years. I mean, you would be no short than two, but in no longer than four that you'd be proposing a rate increase.
So, Roger Natale, if that's what the board desires, if you give us some latitude to work with county council, make sure we abide by all Prop 218 requirements.
I wasn't trying to have alternatives to vote on, you have a structure.
No, I understand. I think that if you give us that latitude, we can work with county council.
But then, Peterson's department would have to look at the future possibilities. I mean, we'd have to say that there'd be no additional increase for whatever term we pick, whether it's, I mean, I assume we're doing this for two years and there's not going to be a rate increase. If we spread the two-year, suggested two-year costs into four-year, you'd be saying to the public, there won't be any increases for four years. And so then when you have to raise it on the fifth, it's more than it would have been, right?
Yeah.
That is possible.
That's the problem with it. I understand what you're trying to solve, but...
I mean, kind of stating the obvious, if we find out that in year three, we're having some fiscal difficulty, we'll be back here asking for another rate increase, but the point that you made is still that that's an option.
And I think it's important to carry in the conversation that these rates are driven by that shift in that baseline use. People are using less water, they were mandated to use less water, they're going to continue to use less water, but our costs don't go down proportionally. So, and I'm not at all dismissive of the concern for sort of cushioning that blow. I do also have concern with delays not only, you know, affects revenues, it affects our potential ability to carry out projects, delaying projects, we only see that that gets more expensive. So then that becomes almost, I don't want it to become self-fulfilling, that now we need to ask for more because the projects that we've held off are going to become more expensive. So just to consider, I just put that out, that that weighs on my mind.
Well, and I get that. I just say the preponderance of the customers though, and the district I represent, and the protest vote comes in, obviously we have folks in the vineyard and obviously in the other areas, in our area and so forth, but, and in a lot of cases, the, there are folks that see a single billing from the county, particularly in the unincorporated area that receives the water, that's a fairly large bill that has nothing but the county seal on it. It's not, you know, a separate garbage bill, a separate sewer bill, a separate water bill from a different purveyor, and that's in some of the other areas in the county, you get that. You either have, the county is, you know, the collection service for the garbage, Regional Sand obviously is a provider for sewer, in the unincorporated incorporated areas with exception of Galt. But in some of the areas that I represent, and I think some are shared by Supervisor Kennedy and maybe Supervisor Peters, they get a, they get a bill that's all, all county. So you can't say, well, go call the water district over there, they're the ones that raised your bill, or go get the sewer district, which is a board that's made up of 16 members, or, you know, or go see that private XYZ garbage collection service. No, it's all the county. And so that bill reflects, you know, actions by this board or boards that are, that are related to, you know, to bodies we serve on. And I think it's important. It certainly holds us accountable. Obviously, you as staff bring us your best recommendation, but I just would say that that's, again, looking at rate structure and, you know, other cost pressures and see how we fit into this. I account, obviously, for what you say and I appreciate, you know, the thoughts that's gone in, but I certainly like to have at least alternative, coming back in July, to have the ability to look at something that would, you know, soften the impact at least in some of the earlier years. That's my thoughts.
Michael, when, when, when the vineyard area and other new growth areas build out, is it possible that costs will go down because you have more people paying those capital costs?
What you'll see as you approach that is you'll see costs stabilize because you've got a system that is effectively built out. You're going to, then that's where you have a good sense of aging out of facilities, maintenance needs. The system is fairly stable in terms of deliveries, the demands, so that's where you do see stabilization. And that's why some of these older purveyors in the region, they have, they've been built out for quite some time, like a Fair Oaks Water District. Their system is pretty much set, their capital needs ongoing are going to be fairly fixed, maintenance needs will be fairly fixed. So, yes, as you approach that, you don't necessarily, a decrease, but you'll see a stabilization. And that's really where you want to be. But we're just so early in that the growth of the service area, two-thirds have yet to build out, we've sort of got that, the front-loading of some of the infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so, we're directing staff to proceed with actions necessary to comply with the legal requirements to, where'd you go? As described in the staff report, and we're holding the public hearing on July 24th rather than July 17th, as it says in the staff report. Is that correct?
Right, but I don't know about the alternative, whether there's some ability to have some flexibility when we come back. I mean, that would be...
I don't think they solve that.
Well, I think we can come back. I mean, we can come back. It's a matter of how, how it's handled with the noticing.
What we can do is if you give us the authority to work with county council, how can we do an alternative? Whatever we come up with, we'll communicate with a memo back to the board, what we were able to do, but we'll send the notices based, realizing there's a wish for alternative. If we can do it, we'll put it in. If we can't, we'll send you a memo explaining why we couldn't do it.
Be interested to hear from Robin. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, the 218 requires science and math behind it, and however, that calculation extrapolates out within what you're asking for, whether we have enough math and science at the moment to extend it four years or whether within two years, that's the basis of their engineering report. We can, we can work with CEO, staff on that.
I guess I would say, and if it goes out like it's in the staff report, then the only option we have is just to do it for less, for two years, which in effect could have the same outcome. But I guess I always wanted to be clear with folks, if this is the amount that's needed, just get there at a slower pace. So how do we know, if we vote for this today, and if it comes down to, there's no way, and it's just exactly like this is?
There is another alternative that if the board so desires, if you want to have that policy conversation about you want to do it over two to four, we could put this back on the agenda and have that conversation, get that direction. That way, the Prop 218 notice is very clear what we're doing. So that's another step. It'll be sometime in June, we can bring it back if the board so desires, if you want those two options. But at the end, I think what we're going to find out, the more I'm thinking about this on the fly, I think we're going to have to pick one or the other, what we're telling folks.
Yeah, I'm afraid we'd be in legal trouble if we have, if we could possibly get sued for not being clear what we're asking people that we're obfuscating in some way. I don't know.
Well, we, yeah, we can't not be clear. So I think what we need to do is go back to the drawing board and bring back the result of that review at another meeting before the notice goes out.
If that's what the board desires.
Was that a, was that a yes?
Yeah. Fine with that.
Okay, I guess we take it back and come again without the long presentation.
Basically, the question in front of us is that you know what, yeah, you know what the two-year looks like. So the interest is to see if we were spread it over four and what would that look like, which will include additional costs, whatever the year three and four that we didn't present to you, what would the rates look like for that too? And as we spread it out.
I would just add to that, though, and what it would look like if you just did the same amount. Obviously, you're going to make some choices. There's more, you know, there's some deferred maintenance, not as much as would be, and so I saw those calculations while I did the briefing, so I guess we wanted to have that as a background as well, so.
Sure. We'll bring you all those options. I think Supervisor Peters, you did say after budget, I would agree. Let's get our budget out of the way and then...
Yeah. Okay, so we'll continue this then until June?
19th.
11th?
19th, but I need to work with, we have a lot of items, we've been continuing to that day. If you can just let us continue, we'll, Flo, do you need a date or?
No, we can just continue to that date with the time uncertain.
All right.
Okay. So I need a motion to continue to June 19th with time uncertain.
So move.
Please vote.
Item 60, approve the 2018 Neighborhood Traffic Management Program traffic plans.
Okay, while he's coming to the microphone, if there's anybody in the audience that's planning to speak on this, would you be sure you fill out a speaker sheet? We'll make sure we get everybody's opinion on the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Reza Omogisi, Department of Transportation. The item before you relates to the traffic management, Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. We are here to ask for your approval of four traffic management plans. Just to clarify, a neighborhood traffic management plan or project is a single residential street that's been petitioned by its residents for speed bumps or speed tables. As such, a neighborhood traffic management project serves as a countermeasure to speeding in residential neighborhoods. In August of 2017, the board approved funding for 31 projects. Once the funding was approved, the staff developed traffic plans and worked with neighborhood residents to build support for those plans. As part of plan development process, we asked residents to vote by a ballot card to indicate their support or opposition to the proposed plans. Based on the board-approved criteria, projects that have a support rate less than 65% are not qualified for further consideration, and projects with a support rate between 65 and 74 require a board hearing for, you know, adopting a traffic plan. And finally, projects with a support rate 75% or greater may be constructed without further board action unless a request for a board hearing has been filed. Based on the survey results, 28 projects have greater than 75% support rate. 25 of those projects have been fast-tracked and have made it to construction phase already. Three projects have been appealed for a board hearing, and that's the reason we're here to present all projects to the board. And one project has a support rate between 65 and 74%, which obviously, based on the criteria, requires a board hearing. Finally, there are two projects that have less than 65% support rate, and they have been dropped from further consideration. The four projects that, the four projects requiring board approval are listed on this slide. The first three projects, Buffwood Way, Winding Oak Drive and West U Street, have all support rates greater than 75%. If there were no petitions for a board hearing, those three projects would have gone to construction. By the way, the number two, project number 21, is not real Winding Oak Drive, that's a typo, it's just Winding Oak Drive. And there we had also one project, the fourth project, which has a support rate between 65 and 74%, which requires your approval. So staff recommends your approval of all four projects. With your approval of these four projects, we will focus our attention to the construction phase and will proceed with putting the projects out to bid and construct them within four months or so. I think the cost is estimated to be around $500,000. I think that kind of concludes my short presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? No, thank, thank you. So we will go to, we have five speakers today, and if you would, when you come to the microphone, tell us which street you are here to advocate for or against so that we know which one you're talking about. The first speaker is Linda Smith, and then Susan and Paul Hanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Linda Smith.
I forgot to say, we have a two-minute speaking limit.
I do that.
That was fast.
I live at 9085 Winding Oak Drive, and I'll speak very briefly for myself, and then I also carry a letter from Brett Holtry. Brett and Jennifer live direct, almost directly...
We all have a copy of that.
You have that?
Yes.
Okay, they wanted me to read it, so I don't have to read it?
No.
Great, okay. Save some time. I just would really like to make a plea for, I've lived, I lived at this address since May 27th, 2000, and I then had children at the time, now I have grandchildren, and the street has become just more and more dangerous in my experience. In the last few years, it's gotten really dangerous. And I, I know that a speed bump doesn't guarantee that it's going to be solved, but just the fact that it might slow it down. Just to let you know that on February 28th, my dear friend was parked across the street in front of my house, was just going about the business of getting something out of her trunk, and SUV was speeding. The driver fell asleep at the wheel and slammed into my friend with such force and speed that her legs were both amputated above the knee. I was there, I ran outside, I was with her, whispered to her, and she died within minutes. She leaves three children, and I just really want to tell you that I know there's monetary issues that people care about, but there are, it's a family-friendly neighborhood, it's a lovely neighborhood, so many people walk, the children ride bikes, and it's just, you know, my friend was at the wrong place at the wrong time, but I just beg you to please consider putting, letting this pass.
Thank you. Sorry for the loss of your friend.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Susan and Paul Hanks, and then William Patrick.
Hello, I am Susan Hanks, my husband Paul. We live on West U Street in Rialinda. Our neighbor Bill Patrick lives across the street from us. We are in support of the speed bumps. They are designed to go right between our houses, which is just fine with us. The whole process was initiated... The whole process was initiated because since the close of L-1 south of baseline, people seem to have, are using our street as a shortcut. Families don't feel safe walking on the road any longer, we don't really have foot traffic anymore. Speeds of eighty in the early morning hours are not uncommon, not just during the weekdays, but at any time on any day, you could see a car flying down our road. Many families live on the south side of the road, but all the newspaper and mailboxes are on the north side of the road, so to cross the road, particularly when it's foggy, is pretty scary. We have twenty-five to thirty children on that little stretch of country road, a lot of them are under the age of sixteen, they'd like to be riding their bikes. We have a few families that let them ride their bikes, and we all cringe, it's a matter of time before one of them is killed. There now is a plethora of big rigs that come down West U Street. We are rural residential, but our houses are quite close to the road. The traffic is just unreal in the last few years. And when this was created, we realized that there was potentially a problem with fire trucks, but our fire station on L-1 can continue right across West U and down West Second Street, it really doesn't affect most of the people in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Just a second, so you were speaking for both you and Paul, or are you Paul?
I'm Paul.
Okay, you want to speak separately, okay?
Yes, in continuance, just to add, the east side of U Street from Rio Linda Boulevard currently has the speed tables. We're merely doing a continuance on our side, and just to give a little bit of grid, if the Board has reviewed the area proposed, there's no sidewalks, there's barely an area for people to walk. They let kids off buses to walk down this road to their proposed, you know, their homes, and we are seeing an increase since we've been there in seven years, kids riding bicycles and people walking in the evenings with their dogs, which I'm a proponent, I want, I want to see more of that community. When we first moved there, there was a lot of empty houses, a lot of riffraff, and we're just now starting to feel like a community, and I want this to, you know, go to the Board and hopefully pass. I don't want to see my wife injured, I don't want to be injured, I don't want to see my neighbor injured who comes over often, and just give a chance to slow down people, and with the proposed growth in the area, to avoid those cutovers. We have roads that will handle that traffic nice and fine, and they're designed for that type of traffic. Our road is for local deliveries, in my opinion. And we also have car auto auction houses near us that I often see come through our road, and they test their vehicles, and that's the only way I can explain it, because they have writing on the windshields, and anyway, I'll give the floor back to the Board, but I really look forward to your approval on this and to move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
And then Paul Harbert.
Hmm?
Go ahead, Mr. Patrick.
Yes, all I care about, you know, the way they speed down through there is for the kids, you know, most of them are between ten, eleven years old, they don't know much better, they'll all go out in the street, there goes a kid. I don't want to see no kid on the grill of a car, so that's all I can say, for the kids' sake. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Paul Harbert and David Neff.
Hi, my name is Paul Harbert, thanks for the opportunity to speak today, and I'm here to address my concerns regarding this traffic management plan for West U Street. As a property owner and resident of West U Street for more than thirty years, I've appreciated the attributes of living out in the country. We don't have the sidewalks, streetlights, excessive noise pollution, or vehicle traffic that are common to urban neighborhoods. All of the approximately eighteen homes potentially affected are located on what people consider horse properties, most with acres of land. The feeling of open space is why most of us chose to live in this area. January twelfth, earlier this year, was the first notice to me or my neighbors that the Sacramento County Department of Transportation had received a petition from residents of West U Street requesting speed controls through the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. No signage was ever posted. The notice stated that the Board of Supervisors had approved funding five months earlier for staff to prepare a traffic plan. The Department of Transportation then spent taxpayer money to create multiple property maps, draft, print, and mail multiple notices and survey cards. They even sent crews two separate times to measure and paint markings on the pavement where six signs, three speed tables, and pedestrian paths were to be installed. All of these costs began accruing nine months before today's public hearing. I wrote to the Department of Transportation on January twenty-ninth and again on April first, asking why a public hearing with proper notice was not held prior to approval of funding last August, if the department had conducted a count of vehicles using this street, and if so, what were the results? I never received a reply to any of my questions. The Board of Supervisors should have required answers to those same questions before voting to spend money on this project, and did the department ever give you the estimate of how many thousands of dollars the project would cost? One day in late January this year, I took the time to conduct a tally of motor vehicles, bicycle, and pedestrian traffic in front of my home facing West U Street. The average number of motor vehicles was nine per hour, and no bicycles or pedestrians were observed when I was watching from nine AM till six PM. By most suburban standards, I believe this would be considered very light traffic. There are no speed tables or pedestrian paths on any of the streets directly connected to our street. The proposed traffic plan, which would impact such a tiny number of residents on barely half a mile of country road, would truly be a waste of taxpayers' money. That money could be better spent on any number of county services.
Mr. Harbert, could you please wind up your remarks, you're way over time.
I need about fifteen seconds.
You got it.
That money could be better spent on any number of county services, benefiting a lot more of your constituents' needs. The speed of this rural traffic is simply not a problem, and I urge you to please vote to avoid any more unnecessary expense and scrap this proposal. Thanks.
Mr. Harbert, I would point out to you that on August twenty-second last year, the Board did approve the funding for those projects.
I've mentioned that.
Okay, so perhaps, Donna, you can, you may sit, I'll ask the Department to respond to that when we're finished here.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. David Neff?
Good afternoon, my name's David Neff, I live on Graydome Court, which is immediately north of Project Twenty-One, the speed table on Winding Oak Drive, and I let my neighbors know this morning that, that I intended to come down here, and the majority responded to me strongly in favor of the speed table. The speed on Winding Oak, nobody travels twenty-five miles an hour, and there is a stop sign at Windsock. However, many people failed to come to a complete stop. There was a time when CHP parked a cruiser up there, and, and it was a goldmine for them. I wish they'd returned, actually. There's only one individual on my court that did have a question, and his concern was that the speed limit at the speed table matched the posted speed limit of the roadway. I'm not sure that's the case, that's his individual concern. I think the overriding concern of my neighbors is that, that the county do what's necessary to make Winding Oak safe for all the pedestrians and, and the rest of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's all the speakers, I have signed up.
Madam Chair, I do have one public comment from Resident Brent Holtry, who lives at nine zero seven eight Winding Oak Drive, and he is in favor of adding a traffic control device.
On Winding Oak, yes. Any other comments? Is DOT Lupe, do you want to answer the question for Mr. Harbert?
Oh, that one doesn't work.
This one doesn't work.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Come up here.
The mic's off.
The mics are off, okay, that's not very helpful.
No.
So, I think the question was in regards to the process, the NTMP process, and the way the process works is we do, in order to participate in the program, we ask that residents submit a petition to the Department in order to be considered for funding, and at that point, for the funding consideration, we do send a letter out to the, all the people that were included in the petition. Once the funding is approved, then staff goes out individually to, or works individually with each of the streets, and for example, for West U Street, at that point, everybody on the street becomes involved in regards to, we first develop a traffic plan, and then we send out a survey card to everybody on the street to determine the amount of support or opposition to the, to the traffic plan. And in this case, that's how the process started and how everybody was included in that process, and I think from everybody that, as you look at the survey results, we had a high percent of people supporting the plan on that case, but that's how the process works, and that's how we, that's how we get the residents of the neighborhood involved.
Okay, I would point out that the support rate is ninety-two percent.
Correct.
On that street. Okay, I don't have any more questions for you. I wanted to thank everyone for coming in today, and I will move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ross, I didn't see your name.
I'm just gonna, I just wanted to say, I appreciate everyone coming in, and I'm also in support of staff's recommendation. I've had a lot of people in my community meetings complaining about some of these long straight streets where people speed, and how they're so afraid someone's going to get hurt someday, and, and the fact that the majority, there are so many people petitioning, I'm going to support it, but I appreciate that you all came down today to speak.
Thank you, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item sixty-one are your nominations. You are continuing to July seventeenth, the Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Material, Child, and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Sacramento County Mental Health Board, and the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, and for your matters today, the Adult and Aging Commission. Ms. Peters?
I hear you asking me, I don't have any, maybe I flipped two pages instead of one. I did, okay. Adult and Aging, the Chief's recommending nominating Catherine Cosse to the general seat and requests the process be waived.
Second.
Please vote, and continue the remainder to July seventeenth.
Unanimous vote. Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council?
I nominate Robert Ingram and Matthew Wadman, please.
Okay. Children's Coalition?
Chief's recommending nominating Sandra Melina Aguilar to the interest area seat, and Amar Hari Haran to the public consumer representative seat, and continue the remainder to July seventeen.
Disability Advisory Commission?
Continue to June nineteen.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council?
District four.
Oh, I wish to continue to July twenty-four.
District three, continue to June nineteen.
Okay. Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council?
I nominate Linda Gilbert, and I wish to continue the remainder to July twenty-fourth.
Rio Linda, Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council?
I nominate Roy Hickey and Kristen McCandless.
Supervisor Serna, I show a note that you're, this one is going to be continued to June nineteenth, you have?
Yeah, I don't have anything here for that particular.
Okay. Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board?
I have a recommendation here, but it's the same person that we just nominated to the Children's Coalition. Do we have any rules about that? I don't know.
I'll have to follow up with you.
Hari Haran, yeah, I think, continue to July twenty-fourth, and maybe you can source out whether that's a conflict.
The Veterans Advisory Commission?
District one nominates Severn A. Banks, and waiving the process.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. District three?
Continue to June nineteen.
District four?
I nominate Brandon Blackburn, and wish to waive the process, please.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and District five?
We're still going to interview, we have six or seven applicants, so, continue to June nineteenth.
Okay, and that concludes your nominations.
Okay, we do have off-agenda speakers. So, the, there will be, I'll read off the first few names, and you can please come down and get ready to speak, and there is a two-minute limit, so please try and think of something different to say, so we can hear all points of view. The first person is Dr. Rita Sepeda, then it would be Rhonda Kravitz, then Susan Lang. If you stand just between the microphones, it's, then we get you in stereo.
Okay, perfect.
If that's a term anymore, I don't know.
Thank you. Well, myself and the rest of the speakers are all speaking in opposition of the renewal of the ICE contract.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and members of the Board, my name is Rita Sepeda, and I'm represented on the Board of Supervisors by Supervisor Kennedy. I'm one of three co-founders of Step Up Sacramento, an organization founded in January twenty-seventeen, based on the principles established in the Indivisible Guide. Step Up includes individuals from numerous human rights education, faith-based, social services, and social justice organizations. The Sacramento Sheriff's Office has applied for and received numerous grants from the Immigration Customs Office through an intergovernmental service agency with United States Marshals Service Prisoner Operations Division. The earliest grant identified is dated two thousand and three, followed by a second grant in two thousand and eight, with the most recent one obtained in two thousand and thirteen. This last IGSA was valid from September twelve, two thousand and thirteen, to September eleven, two thousand and sixteen, but grant language allows the grant to remain in effect for up to sixty months, placing the date for renewal of this contract June twenty eighteen. There are two pieces of legislation that require compliance from this Board on all future considerations regarding contracts with, with ICE. The first, SB fifty-four, the California Values Act, signed into law on October fifth, two thousand and seventeen, requires agencies of government to protect the safety and well-being of all Californians by, by ensuring that state and local resources are not used to fuel mass deportations, separate families, or divide Californians based on race, gender, sexual orientation, religion, immigrant status, or national or ethnic origins. The law, as you know, has several provisions, but for the purpose of today, the most important of these requires that you, as an agency of government, ensure that, and I quote, "State and local enforcement agencies, school police, and security departments will not engage school police, and security departments will not engage in immigration enforcement. No state or local resources will be used to investigate, detain, detect, report, or arrest persons for immigration informant, informant purposes. And regardless of whether state or local resources are implicated."
Could you wind up your comments, please?
I will certainly try. My understanding was that as a group, we had a total of 15 minutes, so some of us could exceed.
Well, no one told me that. So I had you down for two minutes each, which is more than 15 minutes.
No, some of us are speaking rather shortly than that. So we worked it out, so we would stay within the minutes. But I will comply with your request and will end my comments respectfully.
Mr. Serna, would you like to make a comment?
I'll let her, is she gonna finish? Are you done?
Well, I'm not sure.
Pardon me?
She has a letter she submitted here, so she reading the letter?
I'll wait till.
Okay.
So I will end my comments by telling you that the second piece of legislation with which you need to comply, as you know, is AB 3, AB 103, and this speaks to the nature of any further renewal or expansion of a contract. So obviously, we would hope that you would pay attention to the requirements under the law, under which you are constrained. Sheriff Jones has told you that he needs this money to sustain public safety services to the city. The point those of us present would like to make is that the approval of grant money, the trades, and the detention of immigrants to fund the sheriff's office, to maintain public safety, is inherently a conflict of interest. At best, and not worst, a clear betrayal of the moral values of this body. Thank you.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So while I certainly understand the desire of the speakers to speak on the subject, I just want to remind them all that because you're speaking on an off-agenda item, we cannot discuss it, we cannot make any decision today about it. However, it's expected that this is going to probably be part of our budget hearing, which is on June 4th?
June 5th.
June 5th.
5th and 6th.
Okay, June 5th and 6th. At that time, you are certainly invited to come and give testimony on the subject that I suspect all of you are expecting to make comment to now. And at that point, we are likely to be discussing it and possibly taking action on it. So I'm just trying to give you some helpful advice in terms of the efficacy of when you're speaking and how it's affecting our conversation, because we can't have a conversation today about it.
We can't respond.
I understand. We couldn't get that information, by the way. So thank you for providing it to us.
Rhonda Kravitz and Susan Lang, and Mario Galan.
Thank you Supervisor Serna for those comments. We did try to get information on when it would be before, on the agenda, and could not get that information. I did send information directly to Supervisor Kennedy, also asking when it would be on the agenda, and we did not get any information back.
I think, in all fairness to all of us, though, I think we just kind of found out in the last 72 hours from our CEO what the agenda was going to be for the budget hearings.
Right.
And so that's new information for all of us. So just in fairness to others that, you know, you may.
I understand, but I'm just letting you know that we did try.
Yeah, I understand.
We're not stating a negative comment.
Go ahead with your comments, ma'am.
So my name is Dr. Rhonda Rios Kravitz. I'm a Step Up co-founder, and I live in District 2. I'm here today to speak about the deficiencies found in the Rio Consumers Audit. The Office of Detention Oversight, hereby called ODO, and the Office of Professional Responsibly conducted its inspection visit to RCCC in 2015 during the week of January 27th through 29th. It is important to note that all ICE detainees are held in civil, not criminal custody, which is not supposed to be punitive. There are a total of 16 standards, and RCCC was found compliant in only one standard. ODO found a total of 49 deficiencies and the remaining 15 standards. I'm only going to address a few regarding environment and health safety. ODO was informed that the fire and safety officer position had been vacant for approximately nine months for budgetary reasons. Although a deputy had been assigned to conduct fire safety inspections on a monthly basis, she had no specialized training, and there was no documentation demonstrating that she conducted the inspections outside the administrative areas. Regarding food services, trash was observed on the floor, in the food preparation and dry storage areas, and on floors inside the walk-in coolers. The floors underneath the steam pots appeared not to receive attention on an ongoing basis, and an accumulation of dirt and food particles was observed. In the bakery area, overhead fans where bread is cooled had dust and dust wads hanging from the fan guards. Paint was observed peeling from the walls and the dishwasher areas. In addition, inspection of the bathroom used by inmate workers was found to be in poor condition. Sanitation in the cells, dayrooms, and showers was found to be poor. RCC detain handbook did not provide notice of the appeal level beyond the detention commander. It did not provide guidance for resolving grievance or appeal, including the right to have the grievance referred to higher levels and/or opportunity to file a complaint regarding officer misconduct directly with the DH Office of the Inspector General. Given these findings.
Could you please wind up your comments?
Yes, I can.
Thank you so much.
Given these findings, Step Up is concerned about the treatment and care of ICE detainees at RCCC. And we could not find any documentation that the deficiencies had been remedied or that any other audits had occurred since 2015. ICE should provide a copy of the completed reviews identifying the process to ensure deficiencies are corrected and facilities are complying with standards.
Could you please, could you please wind up your comments?
I would add that we want to say, we strongly recommend that the ICE contract not be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lang, then Mario Galan.
Hello, my name is Susan Lang. I'm a resident and homeowner in Elk Grove. I'm the coordinator of a community visitation volunteer group for the people in immigration detention at the Rio Consumers Correctional Center, and have been for the past five years. We are called faithful friends. I'm here to ask you to not renew the contract with Immigration and Customs Enforcement that the Sheriff's Department has to house people at the Rio Consumers Correctional Center. Longer version of my comments are in the packet provided to you. It is important to remember that people in immigration detention are in civil proceedings. By housing them in county jails, they are treated as prisoners. They are not prisoners. However, as prisoners, they must deal with the conditions at RCCC. If you tried to design a system which would dehumanize people, you would design RCCC. I do not have time to talk to you about those conditions here, but it is important to remember that the people there would be home with their families, except for their immigration status. It would be false to say that these conditions exist because they aren't there long enough to justify providing any services. I have provided you with a list of the people that I have visited and how long they have been there. The names have been initialized for you to protect their privacy. You will see that six months, one year, and 18 months is very often the case. What weighs most heavily on the people in immigration detention is that they do not know how long they will be there. The conditions at RCCC are set up as they are in order to make things so difficult for the people there that they just give up. There has been an argument that if RCCC were to close, people from the area would be housed far from friends and family. I would like to let you know that this is a red herring for two reasons. First of all, the people at RCCC very rarely have visitors. I have included in my list the people who actually had visits from people other than our group. It's marked with an X. You will see that of the 45 people on the list, four others had visitors. Second of all, the visitation procedure at RCCC is so bad, it discourages visitations. As a member of the community, it is an outrage that Sacramento County continues to contract with ICE at RCCC. Let us be a leader for the community, the state, and the country. We do not want immigration detention in our community, not because of the people housed there, but because the system is wrong.
Could you please wind up your comments?
And the contract.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mario Galan? And then, I, sorry, I can't read the handwriting on the next one. Carlos, can't read the last name, Ann Ashwood.
Pontz. My name is Mario Galan, and I also am a member of Step Up. We are concerned with the lack of transparency and accountability of the Sheriff's Department in regard to their dealings with ICE. On July 26th of last year, Step Up filed a Public Records Act request with the Sheriff's Department. On October 5th, over two months later, we received a follow-up from them acknowledging their delay, but also stating that our request was unduly burdensome and asking us to narrow the scope. On October 9th, we submitted that revised request. On October 11th, we received two messages from the Sheriff's Department. The first thanked us for having revised our request and said that they were currently working on gathering the data. However, it asked us again to please narrow the search. And a second message later that day asked for even more clarification on yet another point of our request. On October 25th, we received a final response from the Sheriff's Department, saying that it had no data for us and that we should go and ask ICE for the information. In other words, we got nothing at all from the Sheriff's Department in response to our request for information. We're dismayed and disappointed to learn that the Sheriff's Department has no available public records on their workings with their, of their contract with ICE. And as a board that oversees the things in the county, we would ask you to look into that and see why there is no information available to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carlos Montez Pontz, then Dwayne Campbell.
Hello, my name is Carlos Montez Pontz, and I'm here representing Sacramento Act, and I'm also a resident of District 2. I'm here to talk about the burden placed on the families and their loved ones when they're placed in detention at RCCC. So we manage the local rapid response network, which community can use to receive immediate support when detention occurs. There are numerous stories we carry with us every time we receive a call. Those stories always have one common thing, and that commonality is fear. This is exacerbated by the existing contract in our county, which creates an incentive to criminalize those who are undocumented. And I want to reiterate that our shared faith values reminds us that there is no sacredness, there is no dignity in either exploiting or being exploited. Those who come into contact with the sheriff's contract are deemed to face bond, check-ins at ICE offices, home visits and check-ins, GPS monitoring through an electronic ankle bracelet. But since neither ICE nor judges are required to consider an individual's ability to pay when setting the bonds, bonds are often extraordinarily high. Alternatives must include ensuring that someone has legal representation and providing community-based support by organizations which, with proven experience, delivering social services for immigrant communities. As a basic litmus test, alternatives must always decrease the number of people in detention, and we recommend that the contract not be renewed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Campbell? And then Dolores Delgado Campbell? Campbell?
Good afternoon, my name is Dr. Dwayne Campbell. I am the co-chair of the Immigrant Rights Committee of Democratic Socialists of America. The issue before you with the ICE contract is one of basic human dignity. As you probably know from recent press coverage, the Trump administration has developed a new policy that is deliberately separating families and immigrants. They are separating parents from the children as a form of collective punishment. Sacramento County should not be a party to this foul deportation machine. We must take a stand, and we call upon you to take a stand for justice and humanity, to not collaborate with this project. I urge you next, at your next meeting, to refuse to renew the contract between the county and ICE for holding immigrants.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Dolores Delgado Campbell?
Good afternoon, my name is Dolores Delgado Campbell, and I am here today representing the Sacramento Chapter of LULAC. LULAC is the League of United Latin American Citizens. It is the oldest and largest Latino membership organization in the country. We are a national civil rights and service organization. The current campaign of Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency has greatly expanded to include the systematic separation of families during enforcement. Today, I am here to request, and I intend to return, to request that the County of Sacramento not renew the contract with ICE for the use of the county detention facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Then Jose Casada? And Carolina Elena Flores are the last two speakers.
Hello, all, thank you for listening to us. I'll be brief, since you guys really can't comment on anything we say. But my name is Jose Casada, and I'm a District 2 resident. I'm here to represent the Sacramento Chapter of the ACLU, as well as the national, not the national, excuse me, the state affiliate in Northern California. And just want to talk about what my job has been for the last few years, which is to educate and distribute education concerning people's constitutional rights, especially for undocumented communities when they're interacting with ICE. And I think I could feel confident in expressing the fear that our communities face. And it's rightfully so, based on the rhetoric that's coming out of the national administration, as well as cooperation that goes beyond cooperation between local law enforcement and federal ICE, and federal ICE officials. One thing that we're seeing is fears of mothers dropping off their kids to school, what's going to happen if they're stopped by ICE? Or what's the best time to go to the grocery store? And that's a pretty scary situation we live in. But I also want to speak to the chilling effect that our policies have on resources that we invest in. So for example, we invest in the health of our communities as a whole, and we're seeing kids of undocumented immigrants being withheld from these resources that they so badly need. So if we're going to invest in our community as a whole, we should take that into consideration when we forego the profits that come from ending this ICE contract. And as well, I'll be quick with this. We have some concerns with the PRA and its eventual dismissal. We believe that government transparency is crucial to our democracy. So I look forward to seeing you guys on June 5th and 6th, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Carolina Elena Flores?
Jeez, I haven't been there in a long time.
Hi, Karen.
I'm in Tati Kennedy's district. My name is Carolina Elena Flores. I'm a retired social worker, working for the county for 20 years. I'm representing the Zapatista Solidarity Coalition, which is a grassroots organization that helps the indigenous in Chiapas, Mexico. For 20 years, I've worked on getting donations for the children. We helped build a couple of schools down there in Chiapas, and we support the Women's Artisan Network. I'm here because ICE contract is not in the spirit of California State or Sacramento City. The detention is not following the intent of the law, the Trust Act, and the Truth Act. These immigrants are already holding jobs, they're owning houses, they have families. The consequences of removing these men as head of households and sole income earners destroys the families. I represent the Zapatista Solidarity Coalition, and we oppose this contract coming to Sacramento County. And you, as our county representatives, I hope that you will deny this. Inevitably, as we have become Zapatista Solidarity Coalition, we've become like monitors for the Spanish-speaking community, their health and well-being. And so we see how immigration detention negatively impacts the community. So we oppose ICE in this county. I, as a grandmother, don't want it here. I don't want it to have anything to do with any of my neighbors. People are scared to get out because of that ICE. It is not a life to live. And I ask for you, for the sake of humanity and human dignity, do not renew this contract. Thank you very much. And I'm leaving my letter for you.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Okay. That completes the public speaking, and we'll move on to county exec comments.
Very quick comment, county budget. It's slated to go live on Friday, which is May 25th. It will be available on our webpage, sacramentocounty.net. Also, hard copies will be available in Budget and Debt Management and the Clerk's Office. We plan on, not plan, we are scheduled to have budget hearings starting June 5th at 9:30, and also go on June 6th. So the adoption, depending on testimony where we are, most likely will be 6th, but we'll see what 5th does. So those are the days for budget.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So like years past, Nav will, we preserve part of the second day of budget hearings to have comprehensive answers to questions that board members or members of the public posed during the first day of budget hearings.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Did you comment on that subject?[1777.44] Did you comment on that subject?
No, I just wanted to ask, when will we have a draft copy?
It will be out Friday, this coming Friday.
Mr. Serna?
Just on this item, on the budget, in light of the testimony you just heard, I think it'd be very important, obviously, that, you know, you'll be in communication with various departments, but I think more than just in a budget context, there needs to be some background information for this board, particularly in light of the conversation that we couldn't have, there was only one way to do it, testimony in light of off-agenda, but I would ask that it be very clear that we have background information available to this board in advance, not just on that day, please.
No, understood.
Okay, good, thanks.
Okay, are there any additional board comments?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
I just wanted to point out that I know it was a very, very busy weekend for all of us in terms of the number of community events that seemed to happen this time of year, which is a good thing. But there was a community event on Sunday and it was the 15th Annual Ride the Parkway event that the American River Parkway Foundation hosts every year. It used to be called Rex Ride. And one of the bands that I have the pleasure of playing in had the opportunity to entertain the crowd, and I just wanted to share with the board and especially our county executive that, to a person that came up to me and us during that performance on Sunday, believe it or not, all of the commentary about the condition of the parkway was overwhelmingly positive, which is very different than in years past. I was very accustomed to getting my ear chewed about the need to do more, and certainly there is need to do more in the parkway, I'll be the first to admit that. But it was very, very refreshing to hear in person directly from some of this county's staunchest advocates for the parkway, that they are witnessing a cleaner parkway, a safer parkway. They're noting the personnel that they see in the parkway, which adds to their sense of safety. Many of them, obviously cyclists, so I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with the board and with our executives.
Anyone else? I just had one comment in the back section where you just send letters and reports that don't come to the board meeting. It discusses the abandoned cart prevention plan ordinance, and it reminded me of a comment that was made during the homeless outreach team's report a couple weeks ago where they said they discussed all the number of shopping carts that they picked up.
And the value of them.
And the value was $200,000 or $300,000? Yeah, it was some astounding amount. And I don't have that in front of me, but this report here and their report don't seem to match up. So I guess I'd like to know is, how do they match up? And did we, did the Sheriff's Department return all those carts to the shopping centers and were they fined in some way?
We will follow up on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I was actually going to bring it up at that meeting, but I didn't, because you have, they all are supposed to sign off on our ordinance, which says they have a plan in place, but I think that those plans are just ending up on a shelf somewhere and we're not enforcing that.
Which might be a code enforcement situation, or maybe the Sheriff's Department's taken over for code enforcement. I don't know.
We'll make sure the coordination is there.
Okay. Does that complete our business?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.